City of Stevens Point Special Common Council Meeting, recorded November 10, 2021.
I have six o'clock. I will call the Special Common Council Meeting to order. Clerk, could we get a roll?
Christiansen.
Here.
Shore.
Here.
Keemer. Keemer?
Here.
Zarazua?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Slawinski's excuse, Nibone?
Here.
Leek?
Here.
Dalton?
Here.
Bischler?
Bischler.
Bischler?
One more time.
Bischler.
Here.
There we go.
Morrow.
Here.
All right, we do have a quorum, so we will continue. Item number two is the Minutes and Actions of the Redistricting Committee of November 3, 2021. Need a motion? Zarazua?
Approve.
Moves to approve.
I second.
Our seconds. Discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Um, I would like to bring up that just in the identification of the wards, and I understand that this is a negotiation also with the county mapping, that I've had a number of concerns from community members in our neighborhood I represent and kind of the boundaries of it, that the current wards splits up the courthouse area, which tends to be a neighborhood identity. And one of the things that we'll be looking at later this evening in the strategic plan is a plan and an idea for the city to move forward with neighborhood identity base and cohesion where people geographically understand their neighborhoods to be. And the borders currently between 25, 3, 14 really breaks up from my neighborhood's perspective, the TriBecla or the Ice Cream Belt neighborhood, that is that triangle. Um, and so, you know, I understand that it's going to be difficult for me to move the census blocks around, but I think that particularly the district ones where stretching down all the way to Carl Dees, basically all the way up to North Pallett, is not really a contiguous neighborhood identity. And I think it'll be difficult for an individual to represent a lot of what that encompasses, which is college neighborhoods, its families, and, you know, there's a, and parts of downtown. I think there's just a lot within that tract that will be difficult. And I would have liked to have seen something different, I guess.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
Point of clarification, this is just approved in minutes?
Correct. Okay, seeing no one else, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is approved. Item number three is a resolution. Um, and that resolution creates revised wards located in the city. Clerk, did you have anything you wanted to add onto this?
Um, yes, if I could. Uh, just going to explain the redistricting process first. Stage one was the tentative supervisory district plan. Uh, the county goes first. Stage two then is the municipal ward plans. Um, wards must be entirely within a single supervisory district. Municipalities are encouraged to try to fit their wards within the supervisory districts given to them. However, municipalities can disagree and submit their own plan, in which the city did with redraw aid that was presented to the council on September 30. Portage County worked with the city and adjusted a couple of their lines to accommodate the city. The city was then required to make the remaining adjustments to their ward boundaries, hence the new plan, redistricting plan being presented this evening. Wisconsin state statutes indicate range of allowable population within a ward is based on total population of municipality. For the city, that population range is 600 to 2,100. Wards must reflect changes in population, changes in minority population, and/or changes in ward municipal boundaries. Stage three, which is where we are now, municipalities and counties will have the opportunity to reconcile any conflicting boundaries that would cause a ward to be divided into multiple supervisory districts. This is the stage we're currently at. Once again, Portage County did adjust some lines for us to accommodate the city, and the city then was required to make the remaining adjustments to their ward boundaries. Once again, um, being presented to you this evening. The redistricting requirements for creating wards are wards that are entirely within a single supervisory district. Ward population ranges must be between 600 and 2,100. For the city, each aldermanic district contains three wards. The total population for the city of Stevens Point is 25,666, which is a decrease in population. Average population per aldermanic district is 2,333. The recommendation of the redistricting committee to the clerk's office was to bring all wards into compliance with the required population of 600 to 2,100, and if possible, increase population in District Three and decrease population in District Eight in the least disruptive plan as possible, and communicate with Portage County as to their county supervisory district plan. After redrawing the lines on the plan presented this evening, the population range is now within every district, every ward is in compliance with populations between 621, as well as all wards are located within one supervisory district as required.
Okay, need a motion?
I move we postpone the vote on this ordinance until the meeting on the 15th, and...
Which meeting? The council meeting?
Regular council meeting.
Regular council meeting.
On the 15th.
Okay, we have a motion to postpone until November 15th at the regular common council meeting. So, second?
I also, I also do the second.
Seconded by Morrow. Discussion on the motion.
Um, I think that Alder Darden's, um, concerns need end up being addressed. And I think that should give her enough, that should give her and the city enough time to work out whatever they need to work out.
Alder, Mr. Alder Christiansen.
Okay, and I've spent quite a bit of time on this in the last week. After we received the latest revision, um, the early revision had an average deviation from our, our target population of 3.3%. The latest iteration has a deviation of 7%. Um, the way we are, we are, according to case law, you're tried, you're supposed to try to keep your deviation to 10% or less from the smallest district to the largest district. So you take your variance from the smallest one to the target, get what that percentage is, and you get the same, you do the same thing then for the largest district. Go from your target population of 2,333, and we have our largest is over 2,700. Our total, when those are added together, we're at 28%. 28% to me really flies in the face of one vote, one person, one vote. We have too much variation in the size of our districts. I know it's a difficult progress, process. I also feel bad for the staff because they were put behind the eight ball. They got the census data much later than they typically do. The county, for me, that in order to get to that 10%, you kind of look at having a variance of about 100 away from the target population. So you could go down to 22, 33, and all the way up to 24, 33. I use that as an arbitrary number just to see how, how we did. Interestingly enough, the numbers for the county and for the city were both 82% and 18%. For the county, 20 out of 25 met the goal of staying within 100 of the target population. For the city of Stevens Point, 2 out of 11 districts met it. Nine out of 11 did not. I think that morally and ethically, even legally, it's a little shaky. There is case law, but the odds of it going to court, probably pretty slim. To me, I think it's, it's more of an ethical issue. I would like to, to see each vote in Stevens Point carry more similar weight. It's never going to be an exact science, and I understand that. Even if we could get down into the teens, I think that's high, but it's, it's less... 28% is just hard to imagine. The reason why I would propose postponement until next week is to give them one chance to work with the county, and the county may, the county's not obligated to switch lines. And Carrie and I have had conversations on this, and I understand that. If they are willing to make some shifts in lines, it would obviously make it more doable. If they're not, I still think we owe it to our citizenry to do the best job we can and try to have a more consistent population in each of our districts. I guess the way I look at this, I might not even be in this room next May. Half of this group might not be here next May. Unfortunately, this aldermanic map will be here for 10 years. This is a 10-year legacy. This isn't something that we can go back next week or next year and modify. And so I think it really behooves us to do the best job possible and take one more look at it, and therefore that, that's the rationale for my recommendation to, or my motion to postpone to the next week's meeting.
Thank you. Alder Shore?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so I want to see if I understand everything correctly. We were familiar with the two options that emerged from earlier. And first, I want to confirm...
About the two county options.
Right.
Okay.
First, I want to understand, from then to now, are the only districts affected 1 in nine?
No.
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 Okay. Second, um, can the clerk give us any more background on sort of what was needed that they were still fussing with? What was driving that and what the options were? If you can give us a little bit of a background on that. And then I assume that the, the major constraint on, on anything is that the census tracts, those are, those all move, they stay, they stay together. Each of the tracts. That's correct, right.
Clerk, uh...
Sure.
The county draws their lines first. They have nine supervisory districts within the city of Stevens Point. Trust me, the clerk's office put many, many hours into this. We are trying to place 33 wards with a population of 600 to 2,100 within nine supervisory districts. Plus, we have to work with census blocks. We can't split those. Very difficult process. It's, you may think it's easy, but no, it is, it is not. And, um, with the deviation, a Wisconsin state statute states, in any city, village, or town in which the population is at less than 10,000, but not more than 39,000, which is the case with the city, each ward shall contain not less than 600 nor more than 21 inhabitants. So that's a shall, that's a, we have to follow that. There's absolutely no room for deviation. Another state statute, 5.15, 2 per n B M, states, every city electing members of its common council from aldermanic districts shall assemble the blocks wholly or partially contained within the city into wards that will enable the creation of aldermanic districts that are substantially equal in population. If a block is partially contained in the city, the city shall divide the block from the ward contained. In other words, if there's a block that's partially in a town hall or something, we will only take in the portion that's in the city. In this case, there's room for deviation. The general rule for the 10% deviation, courts have made exceptions to the 10% rule where a local government can demonstrate that legitimate reasons exist for the deviation. The 10% rule is not hard and fast and must consider particular facts and circumstances facing a local government redistricting. When a district plan exceeds this threshold, local officials should be prepared to justify the overall deviation by showing that the districts were created based on legitimate, consistent, consistently applied, and non-discriminatory redistricting policies. In this, in this situation, we have, yes, we're beyond that 10%, but we have legitimate reasons for it. We have to try to put our, we have to fit our 33 wards, city wards, within the nine aldermanic, or within the nine supervisory districts. So we do have room for deviation. And at this time, all wards contain that 600 to 2,100 population, and the wards are all nestled, nestled within one supervisory district. The county, on the other hand, has a little less wiggle room with the 10%. They draw their lines first. They don't need to fit that within anything. So they can, they're more strict with the 10% where the city does have some wiggle room for that. There is deviation.
Can I ask one more question?
Yes.
Thank you. It's census-related. Particularly as I look at Ward Four, where I know there are dormitories. Did we take a hit on the April 2020? That, I realize, is a snapshot. Did we take a hit on students and residents?
When you say take a hit?
Take a hit to our census count. Yes. Yeah, it's, there it is, right there. Thank you.
All right, um, we'll get back to you. Alder Nibone, and then Alder Johnson.
Yes, I, from my background in urban planning, I was reading the descriptions of these wards, and I think the language is just lovely when it talks about the northeast quarter of the southeast quarter of Section 27 of Township 24 North. Anyway, I just thought that was very lovely to read. Thank you.
Okay, President Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Mr. Christiansen, or Alder Christiansen. Um, I'm wondering if, I mean, you provided a lot of data and background, and I'm wondering if we could have that. I, I'm willing to wait until Monday, but would love to see what you had just articulated in writing so that I can better digest it. And I would ask the same of the clerk. I think it would be great to be able to blend those and have a more informed sort of understanding. So appreciate that. That's all I had to say. So if I can get that information, that'd be great.
Thank you. And President Johnson, I'm going to ask you a question because you have that second county board hat, or third, fourth hat, whatever it is. Um, has the county board approved their redistricting map yet?
My understanding is they did last night. I did not attend the meeting because, of course, I wasn't feeling well. I'm, today, I feel amazing for the first time in, in a long time. So I didn't attend that meeting, but it was on the agenda, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Glad to hear that.
I can address that.
Okay, give me one second.
Sure.
Clerk, does this postponement affect the, the required timeline in any way?
Actually, we're behind the eight ball already. We were supposed to have ours. The county board met last evening. They did approve their county board, and we do have somebody on from the county. Their district plan was approved last evening. We were to have ours set before last night. They did give us the day. Uh, I informed them that we're meeting a special counsel to take this up, and they accommodated us for that.
Okay. Now, a question maybe for the city attorney, or maybe the clerk can answer it. Because the county board has already approved their redistricting lines, what would it take for them to go back and redraw those lines again?
Uh, they would have to reassemble their redistricting committee. They would have to take it up with their redistricting committee, and then once again present it back to their...
So they wouldn't need like a reconsideration? Since the, it's already been approved, how do they go back and approve something new then?
They've already, excuse me.
Originally, I know what you're, you're going to say. Originally, they just did a tentative plan. They did not approve a final plan. They approved their final plan last evening.
Yeah, I, I think the clerk can speak better to this than I can. The question you were asking sounded like it was speaking a little bit more to the county board's own rules for how they would have to revisit an item. Uh, but I think for something of this type, they, they likely would just have to reconvene all those meetings and adopt a substitute plan.
Okay, all right. We'll go to Alder Zarazua. Well, I want to make sure everybody speaks at least once, that wants to, before we go back to seconds.
Just related to your last question, it wasn't the, and I didn't look at the county's agenda, but I thought it was brought up that it would be pending the city approval or something along those lines.
I don't know. I was hoping that we'd have someone who attended the meeting so they could tell us. You were there?
I was there.
Great. Then, Mr. Christiansen, shed that light.
Sure. I did go there. I did actually speak during the public hearing portion. I did speak as an individual. I made that very clear, that I could not speak for the city council and just, but I did want to make sure that, I guess my goal in all of this is to try to get information out there and just to make sure people have as much advance notice as possible. I did let them know that I had concerns because of the deviation in, in aldermanic district size, um, and that I would, I would probably be suggesting or bringing up the possibility of postponement. I said, but it will be up to the council to make that decision. It's not mine. I was very clear about that. So they do know that that's a possibility. Um, today, I did go and meet with the GIS official at the county, who does a lot of the, the hands-on manipulation of the maps in order to do the lines. Um, as far as timelines, the reason I recommended going to the 15th is he said they would need to have their, if they were going to reconsider, they would have to have that made by the 16th in order to give their 10-day notice and get things in place prior to the December 1. So that's part of the rationale for my recommendation to postpone it to the 15th. I did also want to address, um, there was information shared that wards can share, can vary in size from 600 to 2,000, and that makes it seem like you're, you're giving that amount of flexibility. The reason, within wards, that doesn't affect one person, one vote. You can have a different number of wards within the same aldermanic district. So having that kind of variation in the size of a ward isn't problematic. We don't have any elections that require a ward official being elected. What's important in all of this is the targeted population for within the aldermanic district. And that's the one where the recommended deviation is 10. Uh, we were at 18, and then when we readjusted, we are now at 28. And I'm just very leery of that being my legacy, or our legacy.
Okay. Um, any, oh, sorry, Alder Dalton?
I also just wanted to bring up a point of confusion that I encountered today, which is not to throw Clerk Yenter or her office under, but I got a text notification for a redistricting committee meeting on November 17th. And I was like, oh, that's weird, we're discussing that this evening, and, um, why would there be yet another meeting? And then I just went on to the website to look at it again. And when you download the agenda, it's for the Administrative Appeals Board. So that also threw a little bit of confusion into, um, my thought process today about what the actual process that we were going through was, because I was wondering why there was another one.
November 17th, there's Administrative Appeals Board meeting.
Yeah, I think it was probably like a copy-paster or something. I got a text notification, and then on the website, the title of it is redistricting, but the agenda, when you click on it, is the Administrative Appeals Board.
Okay. That probably doesn't go through the clerk's office. That, that may have been an issue with community media, getting it put up on the website. We'll give that addressed right away. Anything else? See any more hands? Okay, the motion is to postpone until the regular common council meeting next Monday. If you're in favor, vote yes. If you're opposed, vote no. Uh, actually, we could probably do a voice vote on this, right? Want to do a roll? Let's do a roll.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Zarazua?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Slawinski's excuse, Nibone?
Aye.
Leek?
Aye.
Dalton?
Aye.
Bischler?
We didn't hear you. Couldn't hear you. Nod in the affirmative, shake your head in the negative. Seriously, we couldn't hear you.
Thumbs up, thumbs down.
Keely? I need you to either nod in the affirmative or type yes, because, okay, thumbs up. I think generally, we, we can assume that's a yes vote.
Morrow.
Aye.
I don't know why we couldn't hear you. Okay, uh, unanimous consent, that item will be postponed until the regular common council meeting next Monday. Item number four is a presentation and discussion on the city's strategic plan, and we have Abby Libby, I'm sorry, Alex Libby and Zach joining us. Who is going to be running the presentation? Because I have to turn the control over to you.
This is Libby. I can run it from here, if that's okay?
Okay, Libby, what I'm going to do is I'm going to, I have to grant you host control, and then you can share your screen. Um, and then when you're done, you'll have to turn it back over to me, making me host. Don't log out before you make me host. We had that problem before.
Yes, we did.
All right, so, Libby, you now have control, and the floor is yours.
All right. Thank you very much. Done about a billion Zooms at this point, but it's nerve-wracking every time you share your screen, right? Here we go. Okay. You see that okay?
Yes.
Excellent. To kick us off and give us a little intro, I'd actually like to hand it over to Alder Johnson, please.
Thanks, Libby. I appreciate that. And I won't be long-winded. I've been known to be long-winded, but I will not be in this case. But in preparing for this, I kind of went back through my notes. And my notes on strategic planning go all the way back to 2017, when it became one of the things I really hoped to accomplish. So for a half-decade, I've been working, waiting for this moment to reveal this draft strategic plan. And, um, why was I so emphatic about the city having a strategic plan? Because we have great opportunity, and we've got great potential, and we've done wonderful things, but they haven't been coalesced into, you know, what are our priorities? What are our goals for the future? And, and I work for a very mission-driven, goal-oriented corporation, or company, Marathon County, and everything I do is driven by a strategic plan. Uh, in fact, my performance evaluation this afternoon, I had to report back on outcome measurements on how my department and I have helped the county meet their strategic goals. And, and it keeps you focused, as staff, it helps keep you focused. For the public, it helps them be aware of what the common agreement is on the mission, the vision. So the mission, what is our purpose beyond just plowing the roads and, you know, picking up the garbage? What, what is our purpose? What is our mission? What do we want to achieve? What's our vision? Where do we see ourselves in 10 years? And, and then, you know, how do we get there? What's the roadmap? What's the tactics? What are the goals? And, and I really feel so strongly about it because I've seen it successfully implemented for the, my employer, and everything that I've done in the last 15 years professionally. And I hope that that sort of same enthusiasm, that same zest, that same drive, that same common purpose can be used to, to take our wonderful city from today and into the future. I went back through, again, through my notes. I started with, um, in 2000, September in 2019, I was working with Michael Struski to draft the RFP, which Atlas eventually responded to. And throughout 2020, spent a lot of time with Director Konowski and Director Jeff Schuler from, uh, the county planning and zoning. And working with Atlas, it was an amazing process, and it was just so much fun working with them. And what was also fun is the way we engaged the public, stakeholders, you know, direct conversations with key business leaders, the opportunity for members of our community to provide feedback in, in a survey. All of it's coming together, and again, a half-decade of, of work and a hope that this would happen, and I'm just very pleased. I'm pleased that the city, my colleagues, approved the money to fund this, and I'm just very excited about it. And again, thank you, city council. Thank you to city administration, Mr. Mayor, for, you know, really helping to bring this together. This was a community effort, and I'm thrilled. So that's all I have to say, and I'll pass it off to you. So that's all I have to say, and I'll pass it off to you, Libby.
Thanks, Libby. If you could get on with the presentation, we would appreciate that. Lots of work has gone into this.
Correct. Again, a little bit of background. I'm going to hand it over to Zach Manheimer to officially begin the presentation and introduce our project team.
Good evening, everyone. So my name is Zach Manheimer. I'm the CEO at Atlas. It's really wonderful to be there. Obviously, we wish we were there in person. This, I would echo everything that Melissa just said. This was an incredible project for a lot of reasons. There was a ton of community input into this project. And we went very deep into learning all different aspects of the community itself. And I'll let Libby go into more detail about how all that worked, but we've really enjoyed our time working with Stevens Point. We plan to come back often, hopefully soon in person. And just to give a quick little overview of who we are and what Atlas does, we do community revitalization in rural America, creative placemaking, economic development and workforce development. We work in communities as small as 50 people and as large as 100,000 people. We've been doing this work in various forms for the past seven years all over the country. Today, we're working in 20 different states around the nation. And the work that we were doing specifically in Stevens Point, you guys are way ahead of the game for a lot of the other communities, both bigger and smaller than what you are right now. You've got, as Melissa was saying, you've got incredible attractions. You've got a great downtown. You have the bones to build this and more so. And she's absolutely correct when she's thinking, when she said that a strategic plan is what's going to guide the entire community over the next couple of years. So we were really proud of this work. We want to share it as often as possible. And I'll pass the mic back over to Libby to kick it off.
All right, so this is our, make sure I'm not muted. All right, this is our project team. So we have Zach who just introduced himself. My name is Libby Crimmings. I'm President at Atlas Community Studios based in Des Moines, Iowa, just down the road apiece. Our team is actually all over the country. So this is our headquarters, but it's really just me and one other person. And we also teamed up on this project to really make sure we have a really robust project team. So Alex Perlstein, who is Principal at Broad Ripple Strategies, will be speaking in a little bit here. Greg Wright, who some of you might already know, who's the Executive Director at Create Portage County. And this is our project team. Now, no matter which community we're working with, the overall goals for placemaking are kind of, and our process is sort of three, all roads should lead to these three things. And it's economic and social development. It's increasing population and/or tourism, depending on the community's goals. And really improving the overall quality of life. This is something that we heard many, many times in the input strategies, in the input sessions in Stevens Point, is some of the things that people really, really love about your community are already the really, really high quality of life. Those are also going to be things that are going to be attractive to people, especially with COVID migration and people all across the country. When people don't have to live in their city where their job is, people can pick up and they can move their family or themselves to wherever they want to live. So how can you set yourself up to make sure that you are representing Stevens Point as the place that people should pick up and move to? You have, you already have that high quality of life, and so how can we make it even more attractive? And also keep the incredible talent that you already have in your community. So the specific contracted scope of work with the city is here. So we have kind of five key focus areas. The first of which is placemaking is a community-driven process. So it's really important to make sure that we have a locally-based steering committee. So these are local stakeholders and leaders, business owners, residents, elected officials, making sure that we're having input and guidance throughout the entire process, making sure that we are reaching all different audiences. As Zach says, often, if you think of your community as a giant high school, making sure that we're reaching all the different groups of people, all the different cliques, and making sure that you're getting leaders from all of those communities to really participate in the process. The second is, of course, the stakeholder input. So there was a considerable amount of effort put into this. So public visioning sessions, focus groups, online public surveys, one-on-one interviews, many, many conversations with key groups and stakeholders. The third then is kind of pulling everything together. So you're taking all of the qualitative and quantitative information and really analyzing it and coming up with a community assessment. And so this is also taking a look at comparative communities, locally, state, national data, and then incorporating some of those key themes from those public input sessions to see, does it match? And when you pull all that information together, you can identify key priorities and strategic opportunity areas. The fourth area is the development of the strategic plan itself. So this is guiding the city's future, as Alder Johnson talked about. Where is the city going, identifying and confirming those overarching goals? And then the fourth is the implementation. So how do we actually achieve those goals and how do we write the roadmap to get you there? So again, I just wanted to take a quick second here. The steering committee that we formed, there was a lot of very specific thought and effort put into making sure that this steering committee represents a broad group of community members. And these people put a lot of time into this project over the last year and a half. And so I just wanted to put their names up on here and say thank you, if anybody of them are watching, for all of their input. So for the community input pieces, again, the goal here is to gather feedback and ideas from all different areas, stakeholders, on local challenges, needs, ideas, and really to be able to pull together kind of those key themes and findings so that we can establish what is the collective vision. And so while we might argue over which project should take priority over other ones, we can start with what is the actual vision and what do people want to see for the future of Stevens Point? So on the right side of the screen, you can kind of see a snapshot. We had 1,300 responses to the online public survey. We had two public visioning sessions, a public visioning session with the steering committee themselves. We had nine focus groups with key identified constituencies, 12 individual stakeholder interviews we presented to common council a while ago, kind of an update on the process. And then recently, this summer, we presented the project, the department directors as well, to make sure that they had time for input. And I just wanted to put up on the screen here for a brief moment so you can see the nine different focus groups that were identified as key constituencies. And there was, I think, close to 100 and some people that were invited to participate in those focus groups. So just for fun, we did a little estimate on the estimated total public input hours. And the total public input hours, which is all those things that I just said, is about 436. And that's about 54 workdays, plus the steering committee and the core group input hours, which I would say is a very conservative estimate. This is only over the last year and a half, and that's about 672 hours. And that totals up to 1,100 hours that were put into this project, about 138 workdays, 23 weekends, or 369 Packer games. We're not talking about the last game though, right? Okay, so let's talk about some of the results. So we had all this great input. We had tons and tons of conversations. We had a global pandemic, so it made it a little more challenging to have those conversations when we're used to doing those in person. So we got a little more creative and did a lot of things. Learned very quickly how to have successful Zoom visioning sessions and to be able to gather a lot of input from people all collectively. In the end, we ended up with about, I think, 150 pages worth of final reports that you can find all of the raw data and information from all those input sessions. And it's all available in the final plan in the appendices. So I just wanted to point that out to you. You can dig in. If you want a little light bedtime reading material, it's all there. And so what did we find in the end? So as we're gathering through and sorting through all this information, some of the key, there's some key themes that came out of this. And the first is the strengths. So again, Stevens Point is clearly an incredible community. You have a tremendous amount of local assets, talking about outdoor recreational opportunities, the Green Circle Trail, the college, obviously, the downtown, access to the river. You're centrally located within the state. A strong emphasis on sustainability, on local foods, on making sure that Stevens Point is a diverse community and it is inclusive and accepting of all people and making sure that everybody feels welcome as a part of the community. Affordable living, you have a strong arts and culture community and a high quality of life, as we talked about. Some of the challenges, of course, housing, no matter what community I work with, anywhere in the country, housing is almost always one of the top challenges. Interestingly, diversity and inclusion was also a challenge. So it was something you recognized as a strength, but it also came up considerably as a challenge as well in making sure that, again, people are actually feeling included in the community. Declining populations, lack of kind of neighborhood feel, you know, emphasis on sort of the downtown area and not some other areas in the community, lack of gathering spaces, lack of identity for both the community as well as some of the neighborhoods we talked about. There's a strong sense of, you know, this is a small town, but it's not a small town and we're growing. And so how do you kind of maintain that identity and that feel of being a small town, but also be an accommodating place that's going to grow and have all those amenities and attractions and things that are really going to take Stevens Point to the next level and to be really able to attract that workforce of people that are all looking for those things? Options for downsizers, again, going back to housing. So people that are sick of living in their four-bedroom home and they want to stay in the community, where do they go? What options do they have? Blighted properties, divisiveness, need for non-student-focused entertainment options as well, and the need for more live entertainment. Those are some of the high-level key themes. And next, I'd like to invite my colleague Alex Perlstein to dig in a little bit more and talk about the community assessment.
Thank you very much, Libby. Hello from Birmingham, Alabama, where it's dark, very dark here. I hope it's still a little bright up there. I'm going to try to go quickly through the research phase, but also thoroughly so that, you know, you have that understanding of just how much research went into ultimately informing the strategic plan. One of the key early decisions was determining what communities to compare the city of Stevens Point to. And it's more, it's not an exact science, but you want communities that are relatable, but some aspects that are aspirational. So you can get a sense for these places that are doing some things that you might want to emulate in Stevens Point. And how do you compare in terms of some of your trends, in terms of some of your strengths and challenges? And really, the goal is to inform the strategic priorities and opportunities that will be included in strategic. Next slide, please. So the full complement of inputs went into sort of determining what the key issues and trends were. So we had dozens of quantitative indicators. We talked to hundreds of people. There were multiple existing plans and studies that we also reviewed. And combined, these sort of flesh out into these key trends and issues. So very quickly, as Alder Johnson mentioned, as Libby mentioned, balancing that sort of desire to protect what you have, but also acknowledging that you have to grow and enhance the community and how does that balance was a key theme. In terms of talent, you know, I think you certainly, you always want to have the workforce to support local businesses. And there were some concerning trends in terms of Stevens Point's population growth. And I think it was referenced earlier that maybe the 2020 census also showed some population decline. We looked at it from 2010 through 2019. The city of Stevens Point lost 3.1% of its population. And when you look at some of the comparison areas, Eau Claire gained 3.8%. Wisconsin grew by 2.3%, the US by 6.1%. So again, this is a trend that would be sort of concerning, thinking about wanting to have the talent available to support business. When you look at data from the IRS, it shows, you know, where people are coming from that moved to Stevens Point and where they're going to. And this was actually at the county level. But you see, you know, most people leave the community to go to Madison, to go to maybe a surrounding county with lower housing costs, to go to Minneapolis. So they are sort of looking for some of these things that they might not be finding in Stevens Point and Portage County. And it also shows that 77% of your workforce commutes in. So that also speaks to, you know, opportunities maybe to capture some of that commuting population in, you know, housing, spending money in the community, contributing to the tax base. So number three, I won't go into a lot of details because it's probably something that you've heard a lot in four years, but, you know, a real sort of need in terms of what they call that missing middle housing component, not necessarily entry level, not necessarily that executive level housing, but housing for everyone in between, which is typically a lot of people. Stevens Point, if you look at the data, becoming more diverse. But we had a lot of input with constituencies across the city, different races and ethnicities talking about how they still don't necessarily feel safe all the time in the community. Talk about some microaggressions was a term they used to talk about some of the relationship with other citizens and maybe police officers, et cetera. One thing that is very positive is that you've got a growing economy, the data that we looked at. So it is sort of interesting that your, the city's population is contracting, but your job base is growing, and so finding that talent is going to be critical. And I would imagine it's even more so now with some of the trends that we've seen due to the pandemic. The last sort of theme that came out was entrepreneurial assets. You have a small sort of growing base of entrepreneurs and, you know, beginnings of an ecosystem, but it's not necessarily that sort of dynamic Madison-like sort of startup community or not even necessarily Madison, but, you know, a small community that has sort of that reputation as a place where you can start and grow a small business. So next slide. And so, you know, this research and the themes sort of coalesced around some opportunity areas around, you know, whether it was specific to downtown or riverfront, certainly related to housing. And this sort of spoke to potential tactics related to the strategic plan. Out of these opportunity areas, we sort of came back to the steering committee and we asked them to prioritize what they think, thought were most impactful to achieve sort of that vision of the Stevens Point that everyone would like to see. So three emerged from this list as really core priorities. One was housing, one was entrepreneurial and innovation capacity, and one was equity, diversity and inclusion. So you'll see that those are, have been integrated into the strategic plan and, you know, the process that we envisioned to implement it. Next slide. So good segue to the plan. So this, the strategic plan, and again, it's in the form of a website that Libby will talk about, but it's an opportunity for anyone in the community to log onto this website, to see what the plan is, to look at the appendices. So all that research, again, if you want something to get you to sleep maybe later at night, hundreds of pages of data and full appendix of the online survey results. But the structure of the plan is really sort of divided into what and how. And so the what of the plan is what are you going to do strategically to become a sustainable, dynamic, equitable, productive city? And the implementation plan is really how can that be achieved? Next slide. And so really, the purpose of the plan is to really take this vision that was identified through all the research and through working with the steering committee and find a way to activate it through a strategic plan. And it's, you know, benefiting not only existing residents and existing employers and the workforce they need, inspire them to be champions, to empower them to take ownership over making the community better, but also for potential residents. And again, you know, it's that delicate balance of really cherishing the community you have, but acknowledging that without growth... but acknowledging that without growth, it's really going to be difficult to sustain a tax base, to sustain employment growth. So it is that sort of both and of both representing the people who are in the community, but also understanding that that you want a place that's really attractive to people who now have more more choices than ever, not only to work for an employer in the community, but but work remotely, which is a trend that you're you're really seeing sort of proliferate. Next slide. So really, the con- the context, and this is where, you know, Stevens Point really is sort of unique in that it does have these these sort of dichotomies of people really cherishing the community and wanting it to improve, but not always finding that consensus. And so, you know, projects oftentimes really people understand the benefit of them, but of it, but it's hard to sort of get it to a place where it can move forward. So this plan tries to sort of take that tension and really leverage it into a system, into a framework to advance the community's sort of strategic vision. And, you know, I think it's critical that that, you know, there's an expression consensus is not unanimity. But you do want to find that common ground and common ground that will enable you to to move forward as a community. The alternative is the status quo. And if you're, if you're just sort of staying in place, then that guaranteed you're going to get passed by by other communities that are doing more, whether it's in their downtown or doing more in terms of entrepreneurship or those other, those other areas that really people are looking for in a place to plant roots and call home. So next slide. It's sort of the art history portion of our presentation. There's, there's a a school of art called Pointillism, which is really, and this is the most famous painting of a George Soros. And if you really get up close to the picture, you can't see necessarily the image that you see there. You see little dots, but the further away you get, this, the the image, the the view sort of comes into focus. And so really, that is an informing theme of the strategic plan is really activating and leveraging the sort of different dots that make the Stevens Point community so dynamic. But, you know, backing up so that you can create that that fuller picture by leveraging sort of the components of it. Many points will make the most beautiful community. So how does that translate into into the strategy? So if you, if you look at the the strategic plan website, sort of front and center is the mission. The mission of this work, which is, and I'll just quote it, "Through intentional community engagement, develop a network of creative nodes across the city that serve and strengthen the neighborhoods that surround them to expand and diversify the lifestyle supported in Stevens Point." So again, leveraging what you have as a way to, you know, improve, increase the diversity of the community and different options, different different types of housing, housing environments and so that you don't necessarily have to go to another community to find what you're looking for in Stevens Point. And so that mission, that notion really translates into this concept of hubs. So what we think is that, oh, if we could, oh, we're good. If we go back to the hub one. What we think this plan does is really put the horse back in front of the cart, really sort of create a a process and a structure for identifying priority and catalytic projects. So, you know, a way to really formalize a system of determining what those projects are to achieve the vision. And if it, if it really is, comes from the community, the likelihood that it will be, you know, build consensus and build momentum and that, you know, government can also buy into it is is just elevated. So the hubs will really be based on those core strategic priorities that I mentioned, housing, entrepreneurship and and innovation, equity, diversity and inclusion. And it creates a process really to really form partnerships between the city and citizens to to bring it, bring it to fruition. So now you can advance the slide. And really, it's sort of the benefits of this pro- of this approach really is to establish a way to, you know, achieve this vision through the development of these placemaking districts, these hubs, really sort of leverage the the community aspect of it and the opportunity for the city to partner in achieving those goals. What is the city's role? What are the department's role? A way to really buy in. And I think the be- another benefit of this approach is it's not sort of a six month point in time, which strategic processes reflect the, you know, the the period when they're developed. And so you may identify six or seven projects that made sense, you know, before a global pandemic. But now, you know, priorities change and and this process allows you to sort of evolve a strategy along with what the community thinks the priorities are. So really, I I think a way to build meaningful partnerships between the neighborhoods and the city. And I think another aspect of of this process, this this plan that's distinctive is, you know, a lot of communities have neighborhood associations. Or in some cases, like in Birmingham, there's in in the city statute, they create and empower neighborhoods to inform policy, inform projects. And that can, you know, lead to some of that, that sort of NIMBY banana. And I forget Cave, if you're not familiar with all of them, I think everyone knows NIMBY. Banana is build absolutely nothing anywhere near anything. And Cave is citizens against virtually everything. So, you know, there, you wouldn't have all these acronyms if it wasn't really really a challenge. And I think, you know, Stevens Point doesn't necessarily have that that formalized sort of systematic designation of neighborhoods. And so I think this hub approach really will compel neighborhoods to work together, you know, as these tubs and and sort of, there'd be less likelihood that you would have one particular neighborhood that that would scuttle something because they're, through this process, they're really forced to think about how they can come to consensus as a hub to identify what the priorities are. So next slide. You know, these, this this plan did not necessarily come out of thin air. There are a number of models across the country, maybe not exactly like this one, but really sort of are keyed to how how to leverage neighborhoods to really support activating and achieving a citywide vision. And so with that, we'll pass it on, I think. Libby?
Yes, thank you.
Greg?
Yeah, I'm going to talk for a little bit. So obviously pandemic based strategic plan meant create, played a little bit more of a boots on the ground role than normal because of the need to have somebody in the area that could activate certain things. And so specifically in trying to identify where these hubs are, we played a role in in trying to communicate information to to Atlas about those opportunities. Just going to remind you again, the three main priorities that came out of this were expanding entrepreneurial capacity, dealing with housing and adding a wider variety of housing opportunities in the community. And again, supporting greater diversity in the community. And so the goals in this hub plan are to to create different entrepreneurship opportunities, different housing, and then again, a a wider variety of of lifestyle choices in the community through thinking about these different regions of the community in different ways. So I'm just going to go through samples of what that could look like. So the the four districts that were identified in the strategic plan are downtown and riverfront, North Division, Poynerville, Schmigley, Stanley Street area, and then Central and South Point as opportunities that are already somewhat activated, where there's an opportunity to 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 work on the strengths that exist in those spaces, to create more diversity in the neighborhoods that exist in the community. So just to go through them, downtown riverfront is one we've talked a lot about. Obviously, targeted areas master plan happened a couple of years ago. The the idea here is again, dental density, trying to increase housing density, which is already happening through some projects that are actively going on right now. Again, trying to do a better job of connecting the downtown to the neighborhoods around it, dealing with with Highway 10 as a moat barrier. And again, trying to make sure that that the reconnection happens between the neighborhoods around the downtown and the downtown, but also doing a better job of connecting it to the riverfront as a cultural amenity in in that swoop that goes all the way up to Buchholz in in green space, trying to make that feel like one continuous unit from the beginning of of the downtown Main Street area all the way up to Buchholz as a a cultural region and as the heart of the community. Again, dental density, taking opportunities with the the amount of city owned land that already is in that space, redeveloping good homes, replacing bad housing stock, reclaiming the north and west side in the triangle as attractive single family neighborhoods within walking distance of the downtown. Second, hub. North Division really taking advantage of of the shift that's happened with with centuries expansion across the street from its old facility, really creating this this 21st century energy when you enter the north side of the community. Is there an opportunity to to play around with the concept of innovation districts there, which are, we're seeing in more and more communities where they're trying to get innovative businesses located in the same space so that there's a strong commercial presence in part of the community? The Skyward just, this is updated since the strategic plan came out, Skyward just opened a office space on campus because interns are having a hard time getting from campus out to the business park. And so thinking about some sort of shared, shared office structure that students can access easily when they're doing internships for businesses, not just in Point, but in the region. We know a lot of students are doing internships with Church Mutual up in Merrill. If we invited people to have a presence in that North Division area and really highlighted the the amazing innovation and commercial activity that's happening in our region, the strength of the economy in that particular section. Again, and then thought about housing and 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 other opportunities that would relate to that particular se- section of the community. Next one. The concept of Poynerville and Schmigley, the the various strategic plans that have come out in the last couple of years have talked about trying to make Stanley Street the the main entrance of the university. It's in the university's strategic plan. They just put the Burrard Gate in 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 that particular effort. So thinking about how to activate Stanley Street more in that student housing field. You know, there is a lot of student housing already over there. Is there an opportunity to get to get more student activity in that space? There also is an incredible resource in Schmigley that is in that particular part of the community, but is not actively and intentionally integrated into the community around it as much as it could be. There's opportunity for us to think about how to put housing in that area that specifically takes better advantage of that resource or other activities and stuff that could happen in that particular space. You know, thinking of it as almost like a State Street type feel for our community that would that would concentrate student housing, especially as there's an effort to pull students out of a single family housing stock to reclaim that housing again for for families in those areas. And then the last one is the Central and South Point. You know, the there, we have almost a warehouse district at our, in our fingertips in that particular area. There's a lot of old infrastructure that in, you know, in in larger communities with sprawl challenges have been reclaimed as as housing and commercial spaces. Thinking about that particular area right now, the phrase that got used quite a bit for it is that it's very hodgepodge. There is a lot of excitement happening in certain places, but there's very little connectivity between it. The brewery is there, you've got the ice cream district, Central City Market happening, you know, other projects like that that are popping around that area. But there isn't a lot of cohesion to that particular part of the community. One of the other nice things about it is that it is a little bit farther from campus. So housing that does exist in that area tends to be more young professional housing and less student housing. And so, you know, claiming that particular area, taking advantage of restaurants that exist there, other shops that exist there, taking advantage of this this South Square bones to do more in that particular space would be a a place where you could do things that that again, would have more of an urban feel to it, but keep the community relatively small. So those are the four districts that were identified as as high potential areas based on the hubs plan.
Thank you, Greg. And I'm going to kick it back over to Alex one more time.
Yes, and I actually unmuted myself, which is rare because usually I will start talking when it comes back to me. I I mentioned that implementation is is, the implementation plan is sort of that how piece. We have the vision, we have a strategy. How can we, we make it happen? And so, you know, this is where that sort of structure comes into play. And it's really important that, you know, people have an opportunity.
That didn't work.
I think he just froze.
Yep, Alex looks frozen.
It's gotten really cold down in Birmingham.
Very dark down there.
Uh oh. Alex? He just fell asleep in the middle of the presentation.
I thought it was like a Marcel Marceau. There we go.
Oh, there he is. Alex.
All right, I'm switching to my phone hotspot because my internet.
Alex, it might help if you turned off your video too. It takes less bandwidth.
I think if I go to my hotspot, I think probably my daughter just started watching SpongeBob.
Ooh, lives in pineapple under the sea. Make good use of the resources.
Okay, well, I will, I'll turn off my video then, and please let me know if you can't hear me. So, you know, the structure really is about a way to to sort of create a a formal framework to advance this plan. So, you know, we recommend that hub associations are created to coincide with the four hub districts. And you just, you know, this is absolutely a a draft plan and and we didn't really want to get into, you know, 50 pages of specifics on exactly what these proposed entities will look like. That that will be part of sort of this initial activation implementation. But hub associations, you know, are a way for stakeholders to really become embedded in the structure of this plan. So it will rec- it would reflect the diversity of these hubs. It would be public, private. You'd have, again, employers and and they wouldn't be neighborhood associations per se. They, but it is a way that you can sort of take these, those three strategic priorities, housing, entrepreneurship, diversity, equity, and sort of bake it into the implementation of this plan. So the hub associations is where the discussion happens about achieving sort of those visions that that Greg discussed and the opportunities that are inherent in these different hubs to to make them unique sub areas of the city. And then it would sort of bubble up to another entity that we're proposing, the Stevens Point Placemaking Commission, which this would be a statutory entity similar to, you know, some, some commissions that you might have in the city or that other cities have. And again, this would be a way to create that higher level representation of people who really are charged with owning the plan, with safeguarding the plan and its goals, forum for discussion on how to implement it, a sort of a guidance mechanism for city decision making, reviewing potentially projects and proposals, not necessarily with with authority. This would not supersede the council in any way, but be more of an advisory group. And if there are discretionary monies that that are allotted to implementing the plan, they would also discuss maybe the best uses for those. So and then it would filter up again to to council to make as the final sort of decision making body. We think that it links to a city department head. That would be determined in terms, in terms of which department. But we do think that there needs to be some sort of full time staff capacity to implement this plan. And again, it could be an existing staff person. It could be a contracted position with with a local partner or individual. But again, that notion, someone waking up every day, really thinking about how this plan could be advanced, we think is critical. Funding, again, there are lots of different sort of opportunities to fund aspects of this plan. I don't think that that we're talking about, you know, how can the city or how can an arts fund support, you know, a big multi-family complex? But there are ways that there are, that you can apply some some resources to this. We think the creation of a 1% for art fund would be a benefit. In 2019, the Green Bay redevelopment authority created this tool. So it would be the redevelopment authority in Stevens Point that would have a similar role. And this 1% based on, you know, development projects, the developer can dedicate 1% to art. Or like, as in Green Bay, they can be, it can be discretionary. So you can have this placemaking commission and the redevelopment authority determine how that discretionary art art money could be applied to projects that emerge from hub associations in in this process. philanthropy to invest in the implementation of the plan. So this could be housed at an existing foundation and it could just be a way for people to make donations that would specifically be applied to implementing the strategic plan. And again, the placemaking commission would have some advisement role over how those funds are spent. And also, you know, existing budget, existing city-county appropriations, how can the work of, you know, city departments really become integrated into achieving this plan? So that's the next slide. And really thinking about how departments can, you know, leverage their tools, leverage their resources, leverage their programming to support the implementation of the city's vision. So again, it's another way to ensure that there's cohesion amongst, you know, the operations of the city and also another way for departments to sort of reach down to the community level and say that, you know, we're looking for different ways to engage with neighborhoods, with local stakeholders in a new and maybe more productive way. So, next slide is, you know, closing thoughts, and I think I've hit on a number of these, but again, you know, putting the horse in front of the cart. You've had a lot of plans and often they've got hung up on particular projects. And so this is a way to really have a system to, you know, identify projects that will have that support, that will have that opportunity for the city to play a key role, and just the likelihood that they'll be advanced is therefore greater. So we think it's a way to really sort of think about strategy in a different way. And again, having worked across the country in dozens of communities in 18 years of doing this, this would be a very unique model. Again, you see sort of neighborhood associations and that sort of neighborhood-based system, but nothing that sort of brings neighborhoods together in this hub concept. So I think it would really be a way to differentiate yourself nationally as a community that has innovated a process to achieve your strategic vision. And with that, I will hand it back to Libby.
Thank you, Alex. All right, so for the final deliverable, like I said, placemaking is a community-driven process, and so we wanted to make sure that the final plan is not some 300-page report that sits in City Hall somewhere. We wanted to make sure it's publicly available to everybody. And the goal here is so that anybody can get online, they can see the plan, they can see the details, they can see all the inputs, and they can get excited about it. And so we decided on, instead of StevensPointStrategicPlan.com or something super exciting like that, we decided to make it PeopleAreThePointWI.com. And really, it became pretty obvious when we were talking to so many people through this process, there are an incredible amount of people that care very, very deeply about your community. And it was not the sense that like, oh, we have all these challenges and somebody should do something about it, but it was really a lot of people that were genuinely deeply interested in being a part of bringing this future vision to life. And so when I thought about it, when it all came down to it, people are really the points of all of this, of everything that you're doing, of all of this work, of this strategic plan. And so, you know, this is an opportunity for, this plan is how can the city support people and how can the people support the city? And how can we build those partnerships to really bring this vision to life? So I'm going to show you a different screen here. If you haven't had a chance yet, I'm gonna go back to my window. Ta-da. Okay, so this is what the website actually looks like and it is up and publicly available right now. So as you scroll through, everything we talked about is on here plus a million more things. And this is an opportunity for everybody to be able to access all of the information that we talked about. You can see all of it is broken down into kind of the hub districts, the actual plan, the implementation, as well as all of the appendices, which includes the background, more information about this process, as well as all of the community input pieces here as well. So with that, we have come to the completion of the presentation. I wanted to thank you for your time and we are happy to stay on and answer any questions or if you have discussion. Thank you so much again.
Thank you both or all very much. With that, Director Krasinski, did you have anything you wanted to add? Because of course you played an integral role in all of this as well.
Sure, thank you. It has been a really great process and putting this together and just want to thank Atlas and Create and everybody who is on the steering committee that had to deal with sometimes my frustrations with the process of creating plans and everything else that comes along with it. But I think at the end of the day, what we've created here is a way for the community to look forward while looking at our history and the importance of our neighborhoods. And we've taken bits and pieces of this strategic plan and we've already started implementing some of it. You'll see this coming year as we revisit the conversation of our comprehensive planning process, which is mandated by state statute. Instead of doing this massive document that's 50,000 feet above the surface, we're intending to go into the neighborhoods and have a lot of neighborhood meetings and build the comprehensive plan based on those specific areas. And we found that to be actually pretty beneficial as we had conversations more as it relates like accessory dwelling units and getting out into the city and having these conversations. And a lot of that was really based on the information we received from the strategic plan. We're also looking at some changes in the Community Development Department. Hopefully that'll be coming before you in the coming months as we look to restructure a little bit, you know, repositioning some positions to help address and implement some of the strategic plan and as we further on, you know, help us draft the comprehensive plan itself. So it's been, it's been a blast. I mean, I've really enjoyed working on this. I get really excited about it when I read it. I think there's a lot of really good information in here and a lot of really tangible items that we can actually take forward and really make our community a place that people want to come to and spend time and money and live here and send their kids to school here and really making us kind of at the forefront, I think, of central Wisconsin as it relates to the future of this area, so.
Thank you, Director, and thanks to everyone involved. At this point, I would open it up for any questions, comments, or discussion all tomorrow.
During the presentation, it had that 70% of the workforce commutes into the city?
We double in population, over double in population during the day.
And I thought that was this kind of a mind-boggling stat, to be honest, that 70% of the workforce drove into the city from outside of the area. And did that include the students or not the workforce? Does that include students? That's workforce.
Yeah, that's based on place of employment, yeah.
Yeah, so our daytime population in the city is roughly 50,000. And so when we look at that, it's people coming into the city from surrounding communities as well. So, yeah, the number is pretty staggering, but we believe that to be pretty accurate.
Does that include outside of Porch County or just outside of the city?
Anywhere outside of the city, I believe, right, Alex?
Yeah, it would be outside of the city.
Right.
Whether they're coming from Wopaka or, you know, Towne Hall.
Hall or Shanty Town or whatever.
Say Shanty Town like it's a bad thing, yes. The jobs are here, so people come from outside here and...
Still kind of mind-blowing.
Well, sit up in your neighborhood at the roundabout, you know, at seven o'clock on a Tuesday morning and see how many people come into town just off the highway from the north. All right. Oh, well, there you go, there's some numbers. Where would you find that? Is that PeopleAreThePointWI.com? Wow.
That's the...
I don't know if you've heard, but PeopleAreThePoint.
That is the census-on-the-map tool that enables you to sort of pull some data and visualize it. So it's a very cool little thing to play with, especially if you're into visualization of data.
Yep, and this is all in the assessment.
Alder Short, and then Alder Dalton.
This plan makes a lot of sense to me, thanks to everyone who worked on it clearly. It took a lot of work and it shows. I guess my observations would be just a couple of compare and contrasts. In my dreams, Stanley Street is the ice cream district. And the compare and contrast is between Stanley Street and North Division. North Division where it's happening. And the one point that I would highlight on that is that there's a mention in the plan of expanding student housing will promote access to businesses, you know, echoing what I was saying about it's already happening and to highlight something I'm very excited about, which is the extension of Sixth Avenue. Some of that will be addressed simply by making it easier for people to, you know, get to North Division on foot. And some of the housing that's being created there, some of it is students and some of it isn't. My point about Stanley Street is just kind of a different sense of the timeline. I mean, I get the idea where it's not as kind of easy to see how to get there as it is on North Division. And then the point that was made about the connection between downtown and Buchholz and the idea that that's kind of like a seamless, and I think that's true. And again, a compare and contrast. So, you know, if I think about, you know, the COA and MEJs and the square, it's not like a big gap in there. Now, when I think about the kind of the two areas we've been focused, think of the corner of Fourth and Division and how far that feels from downtown. And I don't know if there's anything to be done about this, it's just an observation, but I've long felt that, you know, we've got these two areas really becoming more and more and more vibrant. And then, I love the YMCA and have been a member, but there's not, it's different from that feeling of how connected downtown is in that direction. But thanks again.
Alder Dalton.
Thank you. I wanted to say thank you to the team and all the work they've done to synthesize a lot of information input. I know that's not easy and I can really appreciate the on-the-ground level approach. I ran into Greg and one of the colleagues while on the worksite at one of the mentioned opportunity sites, the Central City Market, so I really know that these people were looking at the buildings, getting a feel for the neighborhoods, which I can appreciate. Two points of curiosity, I guess, for me, one was in the Stanley or the Schmigley Pointerville hub. I can appreciate that maybe the university sees a vision of that being an entrance corridor, but I think practically speaking, if you're looking at where population is entering our community and even campus, that northeast cardinal direction quadrant is really the least likely road that people are taking into the campus. They're either coming north from Twin Cities and northwest I-39 or they're coming from the south where most of Wisconsin's population lives. And so I question kind of that approach to that district of making it really college-focused. And another part of that for me is a vision that incorporates students not just as a unique demographic but rather as future citizens. And the work that I do, a lot of them are peers and colleagues. And so I don't see them as somehow isolated into a neighborhood and especially a neighborhood that is pulled from those cultural hubs of the downtown. That's why most of them are in that north side neighborhood is because they're between campus, downtown, and the river, which are the public free amenities that they can go to and not spend money at and the ones where they do on Saturday nights. And I think that that's an important thing to think about when we want to pull, when we say pull students out, I think we really want to think about integrating them throughout the neighborhoods. And the other point that I was thinking about with the Central and South Point, it was articulated trying to make those attractive, single-family home neighborhoods. And I think within the Housing Task Force and other things, when we're talking about the concurrent idea of having a diversity of housing stock, single-family is always going to be an important and necessary thing and that character is in those neighborhoods. But I think we want to use language that addresses that diversity of housing stock. The better building could be a really diverse housing stock opportunity. And a lot of the properties or buildings that are in those neighborhoods are interesting. Quad, you know, might be quadplexes or duplexes and a lot of people are, the concept of a single-family house looks different these days. People are living with different generations and different concepts. So I think that that might be just maybe a smaller language thing to look at.
Thank you. Anyone else? Director, you're looking for adoption, right?
May I have a comment?
Sorry.
Okay, give me one second, I need that question answered for me.
No, not necessarily. So what we're asking tonight is, this is really your first presentation, your full presentation of the document itself, providing constructive feedback to city staff and the consultant team is going to be taken in consideration with final adoption, hopefully in the coming weeks as we implement that.
December?
December, correct, yeah.
Great. Elder Person, Nibo.
Yeah, I, overall, I think this is a really good start. I'm really disappointed though that, you know, out here where I live on the east side of 39, once again, we're treated like the, you know, the stepchild of the city. You've got downtown, the riverfront, the north side, Central, South Point, nothing on the east side. We've got some great opportunities here for housing and economic development, the old cop site, but I don't see anything in this, you know, that helps half of my district and my immediate neighborhood. So I'm a little disappointed that east of 39 really kind of got the short end of the stick on this one.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Would you like us to respond or no?
Let's see if there's any other comments before we turn it back over to you for closing statements.
Okay.
So far, doesn't look like anything, so... Libby, I'll turn it back to you to make any responses, but before I do that, I want to make sure that everybody knows that, and this is for the public who may not be here and watching this later, PeopleAreThePointWI.com is where you find the whole document. Feedback can be directed through Community Development, through your Elder Person or through my office, and we want to get that as diligently and quickly as possible if we're looking for final consideration in December. Libby, I'll turn it back over to you then.
Thank you, everybody, for your comments. I really appreciate it. I was scribbling down some notes and thank you so much. The one thing I just wanted to point out was, these four districts were areas that were consistently talked about in a lot of the input pieces and a lot of the conversations. These kind of evolved into starting points for the hubs. It does not mean that these are the only hubs. And again, this is a draft and this is all going to depend very much on grassroots involvement. This plan is 100% contingent upon people actually stepping up and saying, I believe in Stevens Point, I believe in making my community and my neighborhoods and districts better. So if people are willing to step up and make their neighborhood and their hubs and their districts, there's many different districts that can exist. These are the four that came to the surface as we were going through the process, so that's all I wanted to say. But again, thank you so much and we look forward to hearing your feedback.
Thank you all very much. With that, our agenda's exhausted and we will adjourn at, oh, Libby, didn't give me control back. I'll just ballpark it and call it 7:30.